Okay, we are live on Facebook and live on Zoom. So we are not yet, people watching at home are not yet coming to order because we are just now getting our so bear with us for just a moment. We are, we are, we are getting quorumed.
I apologize.
No worries. So we'll let you get settled and then we'll.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
This meeting doesn't happen without quite literally tonight. So, all right. So it is Wednesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, six o'clock, two P M. And this, that means it is the regular meeting of the Coasette School Committee. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to do a quick call to order and roll call. Mr. Kenny.
Present.
Mr. Carr, I don't know if you're online. I know Mr. Carr had a potential miss.
I will see.
Nothing online?
I will look.
Ms. Leskey?
Present.
Ms. Recolin is not here. Mr. Dial, present. That's three of the five members. That gives us a quorum so we can do business. And we will then move on to the pledge allegiance. No, please, it's not correct here, someone's. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of which stands one nation under indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So welcome to the meeting. I, I think it should be relatively widespread news around town, but we had a town meeting on Monday night and there were two specific school related warrant articles. The first was a one and a half million dollar stabilization fund up for discussion at town meeting. The second was a four hundred thousand dollar movement and authorization of free cash to fund a feasibility study. Thanks to the support of the town, both of these articles passed, which is fantastic news. But for those in the, in the audience, those watching at home, the story's not yet done. We have a ballot that we need to vote on Saturday. So please, 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 please go to the polls to show your support for these measures or not. I'm not campaigning for them, just telling you that you should go vote. It's an important step in the process so that we can move our town forward. And we have lots of plans to be able to hit some of the maintenance that we are currently having to defer on our schools with these, with these new funds. So we're all very excited about that. And with that, I will open it up to public comment. Dr. Sullivan, do we have any items? Do we have any public comments? Just a reminder, public comments for items that are not on the agenda, or if you want to inform us that you have an item you'd like to discuss that is on the agenda, so we come to you then.
Give it a moment.
I did see a thing on the screen over here.
There's one.
Someone's got their hand raised. Adam Norman.
So Mr. Norman, you'll have to go into the chat feature and ask a question on that. He may just have his hand raised accidentally. So on the Q and A feature down on, on the bottom of your screen.
Yes, unfortunately, we have either presenter boxes and attendee boxes and attendee boxes can't come into the, into the meeting. So definitely use the Q and A function. See it?
Yeah, I see it. Because I just want to remind the committee to fund hydration stations. And I can answer that. We actually, Facilities is waiting on a quote. And the company's already been reached out to put the additional hydration stations in.
Nice. That's great. Mr. Norman did not give his address, just to, just for future folks.
As a reminder, to be recognized by the committee, you need to give your name and address, and address. So.
But thank you for the question, Mr. Norman. And it looks like it's in the works. And that's a good thing. Hydration's good.
Any other, any other public comments?
Don't see any yet.
With that, we have a, a number of invited guests. So I think I'll turn it over to our first, Mr. Aspyar, our C E G School Committee Liaison. Welcome.
Yes, and I'll just have Nathan, if you don't mind, because this is your, this is Nathan's first time being the school liaison.
Welcome.
And Nathan, maybe tell everyone at home watching and the committee some of the things you're involved in. And I know obviously one of the things he's involved in is he's in the Superintendent's Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I was gonna start off with that.
So I'll let you do that and then you can take it away for your update.
Yeah, so right now I'm a junior at Coasette High School and I am a part of Dr. Sullivan's Superintendent Advisory Council. I'm on the Coasette soccer team. Our season just ended unfortunately, but, and then I do track in the spring. And my dad's a coach for that as well, so that's fun. But basically tonight, I'm just gonna go over a brief overview of just the fall sports, school life. So just the first quarter just ended and then just what we've been doing recently on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. And then as far as fall sports goes, we have a bunch of teams. So volleyball, I have it here. Volleyball is the first varsity season, so that's huge. And they're able to make a playoff run, even making it to the round of sixteen, which is awesome. Yeah, and then talking to some of the girls on the team, they're over the moon about that. And Ms. Svenson, I know Avra is a teacher this year, as one of the coaches. She was super excited about the season, especially playoffs. And then field hockey, they had a good season. They also made it to the round of sixteen, which any year you're able to do that, especially like any year you're able to make it to playoffs is a good year. Boys soccer, like I said, I'm on the team. We had an amazing season. We were the one seed after the regular season across all of div four in the entire state. So we had high hopes, but unfortunately we got knocked out in the Elite Eight.
Nathan had, also he wouldn't say this, but had a wonderful individual season too.
Yeah, yeah, I had a really good season, so I was happy with that. But on that same night too, the same night we lost at Coasette, the girls played right after us and unfortunately they lost as well finally. So that was a terrible night for me. We all soccer fans. It was a bad day to be a skipper, but.
It's no bad day to be a skipper.
Yeah, not a great day, but we moved. So football's the only fall sports team still in. They play Amesbury this Friday in the semifinals. And then I think someone was telling me that we were one of the only teams in the state across all divisions to have all five of those teams play at home first.
I believe there was three teams.
Three, yeah, I think that was the number.
I think the cross country also went to the state.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about them.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, but those were the five where at least have home field advantage first. So cross country, they just had their D three state meet. And Maggie Brinsey and Sarah Scott qualified for the state championship next week. And then boys golf, I'm friends with a bunch of the kids on the team and they talked a lot about how awesome their season was and how much fun they had. So it seemed like a great experience.
Very nice.
And then as far as school life goes, our first quarter just wrapped up. So grades are coming to an end, they're closing, they're coming in. Now people are into the swing of things. And for me, an observation was, and we had talked about this in our council, and this was a general consensus among everybody that the transition from summer to school this year felt a lot smoother than prior years. I don't know if this was now that we kind of have COVID behind us. But for me personally, from my memory, this was the smoothest transition we've had yet. And my teachers, I can speak for myself, and I'm sure if you were to ask someone else, my teachers have been really good so far this year. Really understanding, lenient, caring about the way we feel. So that's always a good thing.
And rigorous too.
Yeah, rigorous. Oh, yeah, plenty of that.
Looking at two of your teachers.
I don't have this on the PC anymore, but. And then we also have a lot of new clubs. I know I'm, I'm helping with the chess club this year and some of my buddies founded the pickleball club this year, which I think right now is the biggest, if not the, one of the biggest clubs in the school. So it's awesome. We, there's so many members. And then for Superintendent's Council, what we're working on so far is we have a new chef coming in. He's a Guatemalan chef. He's from Guatemala and he has a restaurant in Massachusetts right now.
He had a restaurant.
Had one, yeah. And so he's coming in, he started Fridays his first day. And he kind of asked us what we wanted to see change, what we wanted him to do when he comes and takes the job. So we spent that meeting, it was actually this Tuesday, coming up with what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and dangers of like him coming in and our prior system that we have in the cafeteria. So basically strengths, what we've, what the cafeteria does well now, because he wants to build off of that. But he also wants to like, for example, the dangers, he wants to be careful that he's not coming from something that we're used to and we've had maybe our whole lives and completely changing it up. So people, we don't want people to stray away from eating the cafeteria food. But that's something, as a big food eater, I'm really excited about. So I think they'll make it. And then I have any questions to.
Any questions?
Just a couple of comments. Great, great job. Welcome.
Thank you.
Got to say that the food services can be great. Looking forward to that. The only question, it's, it's nice to see some of the clubs elevate because like the winter sports is like, there's a lot less activity. Football, we get a lot of kids, basketball, soccer, a lot of kids, field hockey, so on and so on. With the falls, with the winter sports, however, it's just basketball, there's only five kids who get to play basketball. So do you see the clubs participating more?
Yeah, so that and I'm also a member of student council. And obviously we work, we meet weekly. And something that we do during the winter, we have a lot of annual events. We have a pickleball tournament, ping pong tournament, school dodgeball towards the end of the winter. So like fun events like that, from the first two years, I mean, I've been, I'm a junior now. So the first two years in high school that I've had, those have been awesome and things to look forward to. So that kind of fills the weeks well and gives people something to look forward to.
And also the new fitness.
Yeah, yeah. And I know, yeah, I talked to you about that earlier, but I've already been there several times. I have gym now, so we go in there for class. It's, it's super nice. I like it a lot.
I remember you were a freshman.
Yes, yes. It was awesome to see.
And in future meetings, we'll, we will, as promised, update more on the breadth of our programs that we have and opportunities for kids, because it's growing and that's a, you know, it's, it's nice at, at all levels now. There's, there's things happening.
Yeah, because when I've gone in there too, it's, when I was in middle school, it wasn't really utilized. I know I had mentioned that when I was in eighth grade at the time, yeah, there weren't adults being made available that takes kids in the schools. But now when I go in there after school, there's always a group of middle schoolers and there's an adult supervisor. So it's, it's good. I think that's very important.
Ms. Leskey?
Actually, two questions. My first question is, I love that there are more clubs and I'm wondering sort of how do those new clubs come about? Is that from student interest? Does it require faculty interest as a sort of adult person who supervises the club? Just sort of curious about how those.
Part of that, you may not know, Nathan, but we, we have stipends that we've negotiated with the C T A that our clubs that started running and there was interest and now we have them on our stipend schedule. And then there's always new clubs coming up.
Yeah, I can touch upon that. Just like I said, I newly took over the chess club with a friend. And then my other friends in my group founded the pickleball club. So the process is a little different for those things because the chess club had already been an established thing. And the kid who ran that last year graduated, so he, we inherited it. So we are working with Mr. McCabe. He was a teacher that sponsors that club. And we have meetings every Thursday. And for us, we found that the most successful thing is that we have a pretty loose. We just have people join our Google Classroom. It's a pretty loose thing. You can come by, play when you want. We were even invited, Paul invited us to come to a tournament and compete. So, I mean, I think it was the beginning of the year, so people aren't fully settled in yet. But we want to definitely look at maybe trying to implement a field trip at some point and have some sort of competition, which I, I think would be fun. And I'm not, I used to be, do chess lessons when I was really young, but it's not something that I'm super into. But I think that it's a really good way to exercise your brain critically.
Surprised Mr. McCabe didn't have a musical chair club.
Yeah.
Very good at musical chairs and.
But, and then for the pickleball club, right, so that's never been a thing in Coasette High School. My friends, we played pickleball all summer. So it was something that we found was really fun. It was good for all people of all like different sports interests. It's pretty easy to pick up. So by that, they figured that there'd be a pretty good interest in the club. So what you have to do is you have to email Ms. Noise. You have to fill out a club form that she gives you. You talk to her and email her. You have to talk to adults to get them to be your supervisor to sponsor the club. And then once you have all that lined up, you can, you can make an announcement in the morning announcements. You email Ms. Noise and she'll put it on the morning announcements with the pledge allegiance. And then by that, you probably get a lot of.
So that's pretty doable for a student.
Very timely, like.
A model initiative can get that done.
I think they do a good job of making it pretty easy for students to create it if they feel that there's enough interest.
And the other one is purely a curiosity question as well, which is, can you share with us some of the feedback that the advisory council gave to our new head of food services? I'm wondering like, what were the, like, two things that you really love about food services right now? And two things that you're looking to add, whether it be actual things you want to eat or the sizes of portions, or I just, I'm curious about the actual feedback that was the advisory.
Yeah, so Dr. Sullivan knows, we got pretty in depth into it. We had like four big posters up on the wall. These things are almost full, so it's pretty in depth. But I think two of the big ones for things that are going well and that we liked was the fact that we had this new snack line. So that kind of diverged the traffic because you get, you have to remember that the bell rings and it's like four hundred kids maybe are rushing into that line.
That's been going on since I was in high school. So, yes.
Yeah, so you know.
You'll get it, you'll get it fine.
So I think that the, this year, a new thing, I think it was this year and last year maybe too, actually, there's a snack room separate. So now it kind of splits the traffic a little bit. So it's made the process a little quicker. And then another thing that we liked and I liked was that there is no back to back days where you serve the same thing. So they make, I think they've done a really good job recently of mixing it up. So there's good variety. But then some things that we found needed work and that I think the chef will do a great job of is keeping, we need like fresh fruit sometimes. Some of the salads aren't super fresh. And these are things that like, once they're brought up, I'm sure are pretty easy fixes. And then also there's always like, or one of the things we talked about was portion sizes, which is a hard balance of serving people fast, because you want to try to keep the line moving, as you know, and then serving it equally. So it's hard. But I think, I think that once we talk to him, he will be coming to our next meeting, I wonder.
He will.
Yeah.
This was sort of the preparation meeting for, meeting with him. So he actually has heard all.
Oh, goodness.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that.
Oh, he did bring us samples.
He did, he did. But one of the things that Mr. Corvone, that's the, our new director of food services, last name, emphasized was simple, simple food done well. And that look, you know, he talks about you eat with your eyes, you know, it's going to be inviting and it's going to be simple. So it was interesting to hear the students talk about improving our salads, improving our pasta, and then the simplicity of an awesome pizza. You know how you, it's very simple, can be really three ingredients and just something that you can do really well and it doesn't have to taste processed. And then they also talked, you know, as you mentioned, about the, the fresh fruits and having more fresh varieties, smoothies after school. Yoga parfait. It's a lot of, you had a really, a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunity, especially like something we talked about too, is like not only we have breakfast offered, lunch is offered for free now. It's a statewide thing. And then maybe we want to look into having maybe an after school type thing where all the student athletes, because sports in Coasette is a huge thing for anyone who's after for a club or with a teacher or has practiced a game, they can get a snack at school instead of having to pack extra to school. I think that's a great opportunity, but if you can figure it out, it would be a good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
I, great first report. Very much appreciated. One question, just to, to, I like to hear if there's any sort of opportunities for improvement that, that is going to the student body. I love that. With our new, with our new head chef. And it sounds like he came from McKinsey with his strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and.
Yeah.
Analysis. But are there any, are there any areas where we, where we could be doing better? Or anything that you want that this committee can help you as students address?
To be honest with you, like I said, the first quarter I thought has been going real smoothly. And I think that if you were to ask me this in like a quarter or two or after the winter, I'd probably have something bigger to come up with. But there aren't a lot of glaring concerns right now, which is a good thing.
You, you know, it was a wonderful moment in, in our analysis that we were doing is the first thing that the student said about the cafeteria is the relationship between the staff and the kids. They said, really nice workers. That was, that was really refreshing to, I mean, not surprising, but really nice to hear.
Yes.
Well, great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We look forward to seeing you in order.
Thank you.
You want, no, yeah, you have to stay up the whole night.
Stay as long as you want.
You've got a lot of homework to do.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you, thank you.
So, and now we go to a spotlight on learning. This is our commercial design and student lobby spaces. So, welcome.
We should do it. I will, I'm happy to come on up here. Wonderful. I want to introduce Ms. Sarah Anthony, who does teach a, a class here in commercial design. And obviously she's a wonderful arts teacher, so it's nice to be able to acknowledge her and all the work that she does. And I will let her introduce the students. And I, I should say as a, as a side note, we had originally had this planned earlier in the year. But the students had commitments because they were so successful in their own sports and, and activities. And what I loved about it is that they, they wanted to make sure they did it. And this is all about spotlight on students. So I'm so happy to be here. So I will, without further ado, take it away and I'll, I'll share a screen and Ms. Anthony will just give me a. There it is. Just give me kind of a wave when it's time to change the slide.
Wonderful. Well, first of all, thank you for having us this evening. It is a privilege to be here. Just as it is a big privilege to be a teacher at Coasette, especially when I have amazing students like Annabelle Martin and Libicheff. And you're two kind of left. Both juniors and both students who were in my commercial design class last year, quarter three, right?
Yeah.
And they are here to speak with you all today about the amazing work they did around the interior design of the student spaces in Coasette High School.
Yes, thank you. Well, we wanted to thank Miss A and Mr. Scott for listening to our presentations this last year in our commercial design course that we took. We were both lucky enough to be part of this course and to be given the opportunity of designing the lower lobby because it hasn't been done before. And seeing the lower lobby before, it definitely, there was some room for improvement and I think we got there. But the commercial design course that we took, some things that we did were build logos and like we focused on like creating architectural like designs, which were then, these aspects were brought into a final project of then redesigning the lower lobby for not only our own benefit, like the schools and some courses I know are down there. So it was really a school-wide event.
And our main goal was to create a proposal for a space where everyone could enjoy, kids could come after school, whether you're eating, just hanging out there, doing homework, just create a fun and functional space for everyone to hang out. And so we were given a budget that we had to follow. We had to think of a creative name, a logo design and create like 3D renderings of this space. So basically we were given free will to do whatever we wanted with this space. It was pretty empty before. So a lot of opportunities. So we were given groups of five and made to split up the project so that everyone was given like something they could work on with their own strengths and we could build off of them and work together. And then here are just some examples of some of the presentations our group made. Ours is actually the one, Skipper Lounge, but other groups, Skipper Square, just we all made proposals for different.
This was the, the concept. Well, these were kind of like the main ideas we wanted to hit after like designing, like some of the biggest words like calm, inclusive, comfy. I know there were just some new quality issues that were put down in the lobby too. So not only like the furniture, but also like things that clubs and stuff can add to the design, like that make it all of these ideas.
And then here's an example of a logo that was made for the area.
Thanks.
We were thinking of incorporating other clubs or classes in the school. So maybe like Coach A's Green Team could make this out of recycled materials, just ways to incorporate other members of the school into the space. These are some more, these are just examples of 3D rendering we did. We used software to create a mock like display.
Like to have that one as well.
It turned out quite like that.
Here's just some more ideas that we had, kind of similar, same, same sort of idea.
We also had to come up with mood boards, just what like atmosphere we wanted to create in this area. So we included a lot of blue, classic, some people added ping pong, just other things bring, bring the school community together.
Heard a lot about ping pong and pickleball today.
Yeah, it's a big theme at our school recently.
That's great. Looks good.
Yep. And then some people had some interesting ideas, additional decor. I think it talks about it in the next slide, I'm not quite sure. But there was an idea of a fish tank, which could possibly happen in the future, not sure. But it was incorporating the marine biology course that comes, happens at our school.
As long as someone takes care of it.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that was the issue, but it was an interactive design.
Yeah, just interacting with other classes, marine biology to take care of it. It's also an idea the woodshop class could create furniture shelving for the area, just ways to incorporate other students.
Excellent.
And then here are the outcomes. So in the lower lobby and the upper lobby, we have new couches, seating areas, places for people to hang out and collaborate.
And we, I don't know if you know this, but we took a field trip there and we actually, we. Not that you've ever seen my newsletter. I don't think, I don't have a lot of staff or families do anymore. But in my newsletter, it had these renderings with the whole school committee.
Oh, my goodness. I mean, it's a popular place. I don't see why.
It's lovely. Great, great work.
Yeah.
That's it. Same thing, other classes reaching out.
Yep.
Budget.
Hypothetical budget, we were, we're running within the realm of.
Not easy giving a budget to high school students though, that have no concept of money.
Well, that's, that's great. Well, thank you for that presentation, Sullivan. It's really good.
Any questions from that committee, Mr. Kenny?
I gotta tell you guys, when I walked in, I was blown away. I just could not believe how nice incorporated the colors and that. And it's actually comfortable to sit in too, because we all sat in there and looked around and, yeah, like, yeah, it's a great job. Great job. Looking forward to more design. Maybe you guys can design middle high school.
The more, the more this building, the more this building exists in its current form, the more we're going to have to get creative with collaborative furniture and really redesigning spaces. So I love so much about.
And the teacher's lounge was done too as well.
It sure was, yeah, at the, at the high school.
Yeah, the high school. Beautiful.
Yeah, it came out.
Ms. Leskey? Just like, I love the start to finish. I've been smiling the whole time, like. An amazing project that you were able to complete with your group, but also an amazing assignment. I feel like to really sort of ask students to work within some real life parameters, such as a budget, such as the given space that we have, such as a huge population moving and using the furniture. So what kind of furniture do we need that will hold up to this? And sort of having to sort of make your ideas fit into some of those parameters is a really good challenge. And you did, you did beautifully. We do have a great picture of the, the school committee sitting on it. And a huge improvement every time, my children aren't in the high school yet, but every time I walked into the building for, you know, the all school band concert or whatever, I was like, why are there all these staff desks right here? This is so weird. It just felt weird. And it is a three hundred percent improvement and a wonderful assignment. So kudos to you too for sort of giving children a, a, a challenge that has a lot of real life application. There are lots of student voices you've been talking about a lot to sort of show through in the spaces. Because I think in general, students will take care of the spaces that they have a stake in, that they've helped to create, that, that reflects their needs and things that they like. And so I, you know, the idea of student artwork and the student-made logo, I, all of that, I just think it's just.
Very high level, very high level assignment in terms of the skills it takes to actually, it's very much in creation on the room scale. So it's really nice to see that. And also, you know, kudos to Principal Scott and the team for allowing this. That shows that they were very invested in the students leading. And you know what, you're gonna be able to see that space. Every time you see it, you can have a smile on your face, right?
So I could just add, the way this came together was fantastic.
Scott, you can call it just so people hear your phone.
I was gonna say, we kind of breezed right over one of the, we'd serious, part of the assignment, which was, they had to do a pitch to Mr. Scott himself.
Yes.
So, so the third quarter starts in January, early February. And I want to say March, Ms. Owen said, we have some money to redo some spaces. So I'd heard about the project that was going on. We had some money, we contacted Chris Hager, who's our W W Mason vendor. And when I heard the pitches and saw what students were trying to do, we gave our student work to W W Mason, gave it to their architects, who said, our interior designers, who said like, this is perfect. This is exactly what we're looking for. And it came in and was fantastic. So, you know, there's still some work to be done, but, and the budget was way over.
Well, that's pretty, pretty realistic to real life, I think. Well, that's pretty, pretty realistic to real life, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. But I was super proud of what they did. If the assignment was already underway before, we hadn't had the money to do it. So the fact that it could be, could be a student space designed by students that was taken on by professionals to make happen was fantastic. Yeah.
And this is gonna sound like a slight question. This is the space that's right, you walk in and it's right under the, so this is where we walked in for town meeting. Get the whole town walking into this thing. I couldn't tell you how many compliments people say, these are people that don't come to school a lot. It's like, wow, what happened in here? So this, the town appreciates your efforts. So thank you very much for, for that. And from administration perspective, this is, this is exactly what we should do. All, all I can say is more, this is, this is, this is taking. Skills and turning them into reality and that's, that's really real learning. There's a friend of mine who often says, for various reasons that I won't get into. Life is lived and not learned. And the more we can have our students live these things, live budget constraints, live space constraints, live seeing a project in fruition and all the speed bumps that happen. The better that education is gonna be. So thank you very much. And it sounds like you guys had a great experience as well.
Oh yeah, we did.
So what's next? What are you gonna redesign next? This library?
This one's on Zen.
Well, this was the first year of commercial design, right? You're right.
It was the first year that it was fully fleshed out. We had a session right after COVID when like everything and everyone was still trying to find its footing. That was a great learning experience. We retooled and stars all aligned, especially the stars that were all in my classroom. I had an amazing group of superstars.
We try to allow faculty to create courses that they think generate student interest, that have connections in the community. We're gonna pitch a couple more this year. But that could take a bit of a job, you know, give the kids a breadth of experiences and be able to work with community buyers and actual businesses.
So I'll just add that they, one of the things that we've been doing for our schools is investing in things like furniture. So, you know, if there's, if, if, if there's an opportunity to reprise this for other areas in this school or other schools in the district. You know, that's an opportunity to, to see if we can capture. So thank you very much. This is awesome. Glad you guys came and glad you guys had such a success.
Wonderful job. Have a great night.
On to more of our guests. This is a well-trafficked meeting. I want to thank all of you for coming in your patience. And now we've got a proposal for a trip, the Cohasset High School Model U N Conference with Mr. Luisi and Mr. Welch.
Yes. Well, and I should mention that, you know, right in line with what we just saw, this is also great experiential learning. And these gentlemen have done this trip for many years and I want to thank them publicly for all the work they do to make it happen.
Back for another year to ask your support for us bringing students down to New York again for the trip.
And I'll be taking, and also a group of students for, we had so many kids express interests this year that we had too many students for. One Model U N, so we're doing two conferences, one with. Grade 10 students with, one grade 11 student that opted for just for his personal or her personal schedule. It was mostly for sophomores, didn't have to be. And then the returning students are, is it, it's all returning students for New York.
It's a large number. It's mostly, it's juniors and seniors and a large number of them are returning students.
So we, I had sent some materials in our packets, so we have that as a gender item, C1. I think, anything you want to highlight for us in the, here's where we, we'll go around and have questions.
I guess if you wanted a brief overview, but we could just tell you, you know, you're here Model U N, a lot of people don't know exactly what it is sometimes. It's a simulation program where the students role-play actions as diplomats from different countries, which gives them an opportunity for different perspectives in the world. And where they, the goal is to work out issues diplomatically and follow the rules of the policy. Acting like respectful people disagree at the same time. So we think it's very suitable to today's world.
Mr. Kearney, any questions?
Yes, my kids would kill me not to vote for this. I think it's one last year had Ukraine, the other one had Russia. I was, that was, you know, trying to, they, they, they've given like. Tried to explain each side of the coin. I thought that was fantastic. And what they got out of it was some, some great stuff. Totally supportive. Excited to be with the kids.
Lesky?
Thank you for traveling with students and giving them this opportunity.
There was snowstorm, was it Tuesday? That was wild, but they did a great job.
Thank you. It is a thing and I appreciate your willingness to do that. Are these two four-day sort of separate events that are going concurrently so that it's a.
No, so they're separate events. The first one, we'll just go in sequence, I guess. The first one is the, the trip to Boston. In years past, we've done the Harvard Model U N. This year, this is just the way the application process works. They had a long waitlist. And it was kind of wait on that one and maybe not get in and have no conference. So we moved to the Boston University Model U N this year to try that one out. It's held in the same location at the Pop We Marry It. And it's just a different college or different universities, you know, foreign policy students that run it. So we figured we'd give it a shot. We got into that conference and. And we're gonna try a different one, but it's gonna be in the city that we're, we're used to and, and, and so that is a Friday through Sunday conference. So we probably will have the kids, it will be less disruptive to their schedule, although the other one I think breaks in their favor too for professional development. But the students for the B, for the Boston University, just good for people to know, cause a few students asked and they wanted to know like, oh, is it at, no, it's not at BU. It's, it's in Boston. It's just run by Boston University students and advisors and, and so that's, that's the appeal. I think some students do have opportunities to tour BU if they choose to get up early, I think in the second day, international students do that a lot. Our students less so. And, and so that is a Friday to Sunday turnaround conference, February 2nd, 3rd and 4th. That's so, and then the New York.
So then the waiting, the other one is later, the 13th to the 16th of March. That usually falls in line with sports as well. So like a lot of the kids who want a place for sports, they, they can celebrate the opportunity to do many different activities. And that's gonna be in New York. It's always at the Midtown Hilton. And all the activities are in the, at the Hilton, like all, that's where the kids have to stay. That's also, we use all their conference rooms for all the activities that are there. It's a nice chance for the kids to get to see New York and meet lots of kids from all, they, lots of kids were the best group we've had, I think, ever. That they went out and they met like students from other, other places and other countries and they really reached out to people, just a friendly experience.
And then on the New York one, just the one thing that distinguishes a bit is on the final day, the students do get to do the closing ceremonies at the actual U N. So we get to go into the U N and they get to.
We sit in their seats.
Yeah, we get to walk through all of it and see some of the history up on the walls and, and then you're, you're in that room and, and it's a really cool experience for the kids to. You know, cast their votes from the actual chairs of the real U N. It's a fun experience.
Thank you.
So, you know, some of the things that we typically, I totally support this. This is exactly what I was talking about. Life being lived and not learned, the sort of thing that I love. One thing I didn't see here is the cost. Do we have a cost for estimated cost?
I can go first just because mine is moving a little bit further along. So we do two things and we, we tell the students this and we do ask, they communicate to their parents and sometimes we do. We're happy to send the emails out if, if, if it's not communicated at home, but we have to get in early with the deposit to secure our spot. And at that point, we don't know the actual cost yet because some kids will articulate an interest, but they won't follow through. So we, we do start out with a first deposit and then for the Boston U Conference is $300. And then once we knew the final, like the, how the rooms are portioned, like if it ends up with a certain amount of boys or girls or this or that, you might need to get that extra room because. You can only put so many kids in a room. So, so the first round was $300 and then the second round, uh, which the students are getting the checks in is, is 50. And that's it for the Boston University Conference. So it's just $350 covers their entire transportation, their hotels, the conference fees, delegate fees. The only thing it doesn't is food. And we talked to the kids about different ways that they can try to minimize that cost. But usually they're more than happy to go to Chipotle or Chick-fil-A or whatever the, they're, they're, they're like, that's not a problem, we're excited about that. But for the kids that, some kids do prefer to just go to the, you know, the Star Market that's close by and get their bananas and granolas and yo, they're free to do that too. So it's basically, you know, how, how they want to organize their, their meals, but that is a cost that's born for the students. We don't take that into consideration.
And the other trip is broken down the same way. We usually have to pay a fee to the conference itself. This year was about $5,000. We had 40 students going, so we'll break that, divide that by 40. And then in addition to that, we have rooms, which we're still working that out right now. And usually what happens in this case, we do ask for a deposit. I think in the past years, it's been anywhere between $600 and $700 is the total amount, not for the deposit, but we usually ask for a $500 deposit. It's usually $600 to $700 for a final loan and that also includes the conference fees themselves, the hotel rooms. And in addition to that, for the New York trip, we do take a charter bus down, a little bit nicer bus so the kids accompany. And that costs.
Offhand, I don't, I can, I can get that no problem, but I, I'd want to be accurate and I, offhand.
So the New York one ended up costing a little bit more maybe because of transportation, several thousand dollars would cost.
It's an extra night too. So New York is a more expensive conference.
So just round it out, just trying to get an idea of magnitude, because we, we've got another trip coming for proposal, just the costs of going to their parents have asked about. So is this $1,200, $2,000?
It's usually six to seven, six to 700 dollars in the U N.
So it's a six to nine per student for the New York.
I'd say usually it's about $600 to $700 in that range per student, yes.
So those seem, those seem reasonable.
I think as a parent, at least my kids are too young for it, but I, I think it's one of the best, you know, experiences for kids. And then I'm conscious of how to spend a buck too and for, I'm like, this is a great deal. I'm not saying it's, it's, it's a chump change, but. But I think.
I don't care what it costs.
I think they get a great experience for the money, to be honest.
Well, that, that's, that's great. And then we usually ask about supervision, what are the plan, especially in the, well, you've got kids in hotels and both trips.
Yeah.
So what's the plan of supervision?
And then we also helped with the New York trip. We also have Jessica Hanson's coming, another social studies teacher. So she came last year and is familiar with the program and she came as well, because we also felt it was a good idea to have. Both a woman and a man, yeah.
So what's your student, your supervision to student ratio, supervisor to student ratio?
For New York, it will be myself, you and Casey, I believe is. We're not, oh, for Boston, excuse me, that'd be three and 20 kids. And then for New York, as it stands, be about you and, and right now it's you and Miss Hanson's. So that would be.
We think two to one in New York and it's gonna be probably. I mean, two to.
Twenty, twenty to one for New York, which is in line with their ratio. And, and then for, for Boston, we actually will have an extra chaperone. Because if, if, if your wife is out to join us.
And it's mostly seniors and juniors.
Mostly seniors and juniors and a lot of us.
Boston's mostly sophomores, yeah.
And it's also all in one venue where we can see the kids. We tend to make ourselves very visible. We're always walking around, always seeing, we'll see them sometime. They are allowed to go outside of the hotel for lunch or for dinner and we all leave at the same time. So we tend to make sure that we're always available to see them at all times.
And what are your plans for, you know, getting into the room for the evenings?
There is actually a curfew there. So the, that, the New York one in particular is very, very strict about a lot of things. They have a curfew and they have. People who run it actually have people in the hallways to make sure the kids aren't in the hallways. So they clean it up. So a lot of that is taken care of by a number of people in there. They're pretty picky about how the kids act. They also have, which it makes me very happy as a, as an advisor here. They also have a zero tolerance policy towards alcohol, where if any kid is caught, the entire group has to be kicked out. So that you just, that right alone is usually something that we hope, but we'd always keep kids in mind for making bad decisions.
That's great. So I'll, I'll just share, I'm a 20 to one, does see item as far as the amount of people, kids have supervised. I'm not saying that would condition an approval on that, but it would make me feel better if you had another, one more supervisor come out. So if you can find someone to go, that'd be great. But, you know, you guys are the professionals, so I'll refer to you on, on what works. So this is great, just a point of order. Are you seeing both trips?
Just the New York.
Just the New York.
Because the New York is an out of state trip.
That's, that's what I thought.
Does it matter? But, but it's overnight? Is that different even though it's in state overnight?
If it's an overnight trip, is she gonna?
Yeah, I'd rather, let's get approval. Here on the side of the.
Both trips up for approval. So with that, why don't we do a separate motions? Do I have a motion to approve the U N trip in Boston? Hello, we have a motion by Mr. Kearney, second by Ms. Lesky, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, three, nothing. Now I'll, I'll promote motion on approving the New York U N trip for the period of March 13th through 16th, as presented. Anyone have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Lesky, second by Mr. Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Both trips are passed. Gentlemen, thank you very much for doing it and thank you for taking your time doing this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Have a nice, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
All right. And then I think we're going, Cohasset High School students have yet another travel learning opportunity.
This is Mr. Keith Grassman, who's a new staff member here and a tremendous addition to the staff. So I want to welcome him. And I also want to thank him for in his first year, going the extra mile for the students to bring a trip of this, of this type to your attention.
Welcome to the committee meeting and already thank you for, for doing what you're doing to, to make a difference. So we're happy to hear you out here.
It's just a little further than New York.
Just a little further than New York.
So think, should I just speak or? So hi, everybody. Keith Grassman, new French teacher here, but I have run, let's see, about 12 trips to Italy, Quebec, France. I traveled with students around the West Coast and Alaska, Hawaii for a month. Director of Tufts Program where there's a lot of travel. So I hope you can feel very comfortable with me leading the trip with my experience. And the objectives, so immersion, social justice, and the 17 U N goals are really at the forefront of this trip. So the trip is to Guadalupe for April, hoping that it can run. We should, I proposed two dates because you see such a vast difference in cost. And I just figured I would leave that kind of decision up to you. First of all, if the trip would be accepted. And then second of all, what trip dates would be okay because the lower cost one would mean leaving halfway through spring break. And arriving on the Wednesday after spring break. So I don't take that lightly. Missing school means that it really needs to be important. And so I wanted that to be addressed as well. So our ratio is one to five, given 10 students and one to six with 12 students. Kathy Sanchez would be the other chaperone. She has agreed to so far. And for where we're staying, we'll be in our own villa. So we don't have to worry about the interaction of other students or the groups. We will have our own minibus for the duration.
This is just a ticket prices, right?
All right, ticket prices and travel insurance costs as well. And then the itinerary should probably end up a whole slideshow from en route to Capitaine du Castillon.
Sorry, Keith. There we go.
And even though it is in the Caribbean, this is in no way a beach vacation. I think we might actually stop. I would and take pictures. I think that's for sunrise. But otherwise, we're visiting places like a banana plantation to learn about the problem of chlorocon pesticides, which were outlawed in France, but are still allowed in Guadalupe. And that discrepancy, learn about colonialism, the rise, the escape from slavery. We visit local artisans. So all of the money will be going into local travel, not tourism. So it goes into the hands of everyone that's local. I will be learning from local musicians, how to play drums and dance. We'll be going to, we'll having a, a school visit. And we're hoping that it's the same school where I just started a Penn Pell program with the French club for this year.
Anything else before we? Great, thank you. We'll start as per usual with Mr. Kearney.
This is great. I don't know if my kids go on, I'm trying to think all this, my, but this is, this is Guanimal, correct?
Guadalupe, Guadalupe, near Martinique.
Yeah.
Right? Cause they already have that trip.
Yeah, so the kids have a passport.
Yeah, yeah.
I need passport.
Yes, great.
And are they also gonna need, I know Europe is going to second passport. Are they gonna need a second passport as well?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay. Said something that came up with the, uh, children. They need a second passport, if you're gonna go to Europe now, you need a Europe passport. Yeah, they just passed it, not this year, but twenty twenty four.
Is this the visa that you have to purchase?
Yeah.
Like the five dollar, five euro.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so just, I don't know if that, I guess it's, it's a French island.
Yes, because it is a, a department, it's a region of officially going, right, they use Euro.
I would just look at that, and if I see anything in my travels, to look up the other one.
Yeah, thank you, I'd, any, anything would be helpful.
Boy, this is a great way to get to know our kids and. Um, especially the, the idea that, and I've been to Martinique. You know, the idea that was a French island, I had no idea, like, so to add the French cuisine, which is fantastic. Every time we go to Expo.
Right, it's great culture, I feel like it's a very safe option. Uh, whenever I brought students to Paris, I just think I wanna get out of Paris. Minimize it because safety is really important to me. And the people in Guadalupe are very welcoming, warm and receptive to students trying out French. Just not really the Parisian stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two quick questions, again, thank you to you to be willing to, uh, travel with children. Um, I think it's, it's fabulous for them, um, and, and a wonderful, um, gift that you're giving them, um, potentially. Uh, two quick questions, one is, is this open to all French students in the high school? Or is this for the senior class or how is that working?
So we're trying for sophomores, juniors and seniors. And we're going to see who actually signs up. Interest we have are ten, but we're going to figure it out if we do need to bring into this freshman class, which we're hoping not to. I prefer traveling with upper classes.
Okay, so you need at least ten students?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Is there a cap?
Twelve. The bus is fifteen. So we figure, uh, Kathy Sanchez, myself and the owner of the company will actually be accompanying us.
Uh, my second question is, is are there any sort of mechanisms in place for any students who would love to go, but it's not financially feasible?
Yes, not as of yet, but as my first year here, I had thought of something as a crepe sale. But I've learned for Halloween that you're not supposed to be selling those things during the school day. And so I will be relying on Senator, uh, Karina Nelson for its advice and assistance.
Okay, okay, to offset the cost.
Exactly.
Specifically for kids who would love to go and may not be able to.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
This is great, again, I applaud your initiative and, you know, especially for foreign languages, there's really nothing better than being in a community where that's the primary language. I'd say that with experience because I only know English, so.
You're in good company with America, though.
I've been in the community, only speaks English, it's great. But I, I have a question, this may be Dr. Sullivan, I don't know if you'll, you'll notice, but we have a lot of, uh, trip opportunities for our junior, our, our high school and our middle school. Do you have our, could we gather what the aggregate ask of families, if they're gonna go on all these trips are, you know what I mean? Cause actually, Mr. Kearney made the, uh, made the kind of, uh, exact right point, like, oh, I've spent all this money. That must be, you know, the feeling of some parents who, who students wanna try and go to Guadalupe, go to New York, go to, you know.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if, uh, there's a, there's a way to figure out.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to, we can do that, I guess I would flip it a little, we're trying to provide experience. Um, a wide diverse experience for us students, so we're trying to allow trips. That maybe, uh, you know, every student wouldn't do all trips, but maybe there's something, one of these trips appeals to a particular student. Um, obviously this is designed for French students. Um, another trip, uh, we had that service trip to Guatemala, which might be designed to, uh, to really tie into, uh, another student in their interest. The, the class trip, which is what we debated about, um, regarding Puerto Rico is a little different in my estimation than these trips.
Right.
Because these trips are pointed at particular groups, um, who are, you know, and I, I grant that this is a large, uh, population, we're talking of taking French. But even still in a small, smaller high school, it's not a giant population. But I'm sidestepping the question, we could absolutely do that.
The, the, the concern is, you know, we, we've got the class trip, we've got this trip, you know, I, I, and I don't know that it's this positive one or the other. I just think it would be interesting for us, us to know.
It'd be a lot.
So that's helpful, you, you've answered the, the normal questions. Um, supervision, you've got a five to one or six to one ratio. Uh, we have the travel plans, which is, uh, jet blue, it looks like. Uh, we have the cost and we have, we have a schedule, so. I think, I know, I, I agree that these, these are great opportunities, I'm glad we're, we're offering them. One question for you, have you had any initial feedback from students or parents as to, uh, interest levels and, you know, where, where that is?
So, right, so we have about ten already that have interest, we have to see who will actually, uh, put down a deposit. And many of the families are already just saying, is it accepted yet, is it accepted, let's, you know, we're in. So I haven't heard any questions about money yet, but that usually is a question, at least for some. And I do see that some people would not even ask, thinking that it is not possible for them. Cause that has come up in the past as well and I tell them that we will try our best.
Yeah, I do feel like those students are the students that I really want to have these experiences.
Yeah, same here, yes, and I know Plymouth had, uh, finally been able to set up a scholarship. There are a lot of trips here, but.
It's also a waste of.
But for at least one student.
You know, it's a waste of time, it's for your own family, send them a letter, you know, this is an opportunity, Uncle Ed.
Well, we also have the new donation page.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we're working on a donation page. Oh, is it? Wow. So we might be able to add that on. I do like the idea of, um, them having the ability to fundraise on their own. Us providing some pathways for them to work their way to a lesser cost experience.
Yeah, it does not need to be a full, but some sort of offsetting, that can make the difference.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, applaud the, the social justice part of your trip, I think that that's, um, really wonderful. And just wanted to highlight that, but, but this is travel with an idea of also sort of understanding the geopolitical, um, world that we live in. And so I appreciate that.
Put context in it.
It's a, it's a total immersion.
Um, one other question, so we've got ten interested already. Is, let's say you get twenty four, is there, is there an opportunity to expand? I know we've got the bus limitation, is there a possibility to have two buses or a larger bus?
Yes.
Okay, so excellent.
We just have two groups going simultaneously, Kathy Sanchez would be in one bus, I would be in the other.
And then, then the only caveat, we need some more supervision, keep the ratios down.
Well, yeah, yes.
So, um, okay, so any further questions or comments from the committee? If not, I do believe this is up for approval.
Well, I think there, there's two, there's two trips proposed.
Right, two date periods, right. One falls, the five thousand dollar one falls within the timeframe of the break. And then the second one for thirty two eighty one.
Yeah.
Would be halfway through spring break and arriving back, uh, on the Wednesday.
Chairman Dial, is okay if I ask Principal Scott a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, Principal Scott, have you had trips that carry over into the school, uh, week that come back?
Yeah, there's some times where we left, you know, the Thursday before, um, the, in top of the Mr. Grassman. The flights to Guadalupe only run Wednesdays and Saturdays. So it's not like a flight to Italy where you could potentially leave on a Friday and come early and save a few hundred bucks. I would almost propose that we ask the families which days they prefer. We're talking about a really small population of kids, we're not losing fifty, sixty kids to the Europe trip. We're talking about ten kids, we can figure out those, those three days.
And these were handled as excused absences and?
Yeah, it's a school trip.
School trip, yeah.
So, um, I'll open up for, for the committee, although one option would be to approve the trip in concept and allow the administration to determine the, the dates.
Uh, you can do.
But, uh, I'll open up, any, uh, comments on dates?
I, I, I think, um, my question would just be that it, that it's agreeable to, to all parties and it doesn't penalize the children in any way, um, which it sounds like.
Maybe that would be something to take into consideration as you're choosing between the two. If there were some students that wanna go and the price is really prohibitive of the larger ones, maybe that does sway you to do the, the shorter one.
I mean, if we're being realistic, a lot of people are taking on Friday before vacation anyway, so the day's pretty light. If I was a family and I was gonna save two thousand bucks for two days with schoolwork, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, what, what I'll do is I'll ask for a motion to approve the trips. And to give Lance all of Mr. Kearney, no, I, um, so before we make the motion, let's have a motion available. As for a motion to approve the trips as presented, uh, on the dates as selected by the administration in their, uh, determination as to best interest of the students.
So.
Second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. It unanimously approved. Mr. Grassman, thank you very much for doing this, uh, and please go forth and take our kids to safety to Guadalupe.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for this.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Long voyage. What was that? Thank you, Principal Scott. Thank you, Principal Scott, for coming. All right, that closes our invited guests, so now we can get to the. Yes. Um, and then there were three, we, but Corv remain, people, uh, paying, did it home. Uh, and Vice Chairman Colin had some childcare issues, so he's, um, he's unable to attend.
They're worse.
Um, so, uh, I'll put it over to you, Dr. Sullivan, for any school updates.
Not a lot of, uh, school updates, um, except I did want to, uh, mention that Deer Hill had a lovely, um, Veterans Day ceremony on Monday, uh, that was, uh, great. We had our essay award winners, there are five of them, I believe, speak and, uh, say their essays. We had a lovely, um, rendering of, um, the, uh, National Anthem, uh, by, uh, one of our ESPs, it was fantastic. And then we had, um, Mr. Phil Mahoney, who is the, uh, town's veteran officer. He, he is such an involved, um, real asset to the town. Uh, he's done many, ma- ma- I can't even tell you, numerous amount of, um, speeches for our students. He spoke at National Honor Society banquet, he was the honored speaker last, uh, last year. And, uh, he plays a huge role in the Veterans Day ceremonies and he also coaches multiple sports. I just, just wanna thank him, uh, publicly for, for doing that. He, he gave a nice speech, so, um, things are going very well. I think, uh, you know, we're, we're looking forward to, uh, to a short week and, uh, and Thanksgiving and some family time. But, um, it's, uh, things are moving very, very well.
Great.
That's all I want to update on and, uh, Nate did a good thorough job, we had a good conversation.
So it, it's often hard to follow the, uh, student liaison, I imagine, uh, so thank you for that. Um, I, I'll move it on to our next, um, uh, agenda item, which is a discussion regarding Halloween costumes. This came up, uh, last meeting and, and was, um, the subject of some community discussion. And so I think the question, uh, at issue is, is about Halloween costumes, the process for and the rationale behind. Uh, specifically on the elementary school level, the, the concerns I heard raised from parents were that, um, you know, they would like their kids to be able to wear Halloween costumes in elementary school. I think that's a fun thing for kids to do and were unclear and felt that there was some sort of inequity when they saw either, uh, faculty, staff or students in upper grades wearing costumes and they're, and they were under the impression that, um, their students in the elementary schools could not wear costumes. So.
Yes.
Uh, we, we do wanna address that here, so, uh, Dr. Sullivan, you are on the hot seat.
Yeah, that's fine, I like the hot seat sometimes. Um, first of all, I, I, I wanna thank those families who reached out and it's that open communication is really important in these matters. Um, to clarify, there is no district edict about, um, Halloween one way or another. And I should be clear that it's really about the celebration of our students and allowing them a spirit day. Um, on a time when, you know, let's face it, as a, as a country, we, we dress up on that day. We really, uh, we, the, there's no rule that says you can't wear costumes. Um, I do, however, allow principals to, um, create, well, I'll say this, it's very important to me that there are spirit days. It's very important to me that as part of the culture, we allow kids to express themselves, allow kids to have fun, um, throughout the year for various reasons. And we do have spirit days at every level. And we have, and we do have dress up days at, at every level, quite frankly, um, that I can think of. I know we do a hundred days at the, um, at the, uh, Osgood, often they dress up for that. We have, um, during the readathon, we have, um, you can dress as your favorite character. Um, there are some light academic activities and I say light around those. Uh, and then at the high school and, um, middle school and more of the high school, you tend to have more spirit days around, um, Thanksgiving, around our, uh, homecoming, they had a whole, whole dress up time and then you do see students dressing for Halloween. I really left it to the principals to determine what is a distracting situation and what isn't for their own students. Um, that's, that's really all it is. We did have, um, fall activities, uh, throughout all, both elementary schools. And I know at the middle school, they decorated doors, uh, I shared that in my newsletter and I know we had that wonderful PSO sponsored trunk or treat. Uh, granted, not in the school. Um, nothing prohibits a, a, a student, a student, uh, able, being able to wear a, a costume necessarily. Although it might not be something that is celebrated as a spirit day by a particular building. Um, I know there's been some talk about inclusivity, we are always trying to be inclusive, but quite frankly, in this particular situation, if it was a situation where it was in some ways offensive to anyone, we would present an alternative activity. Uh, so that really isn't a prohibitive factor, uh, in my estimation. You know, there's some, some growth element here that in, in giving, um, people autonomy to make choices. We wanna make sure that we're delivering the same message about what we're doing, but no one, um, to be on the record is prohibited from wearing a costume. And certainly, you know, it's a fun day, um, but we do have to be conscious of what's happening in the, in the school building. You know, sometimes these costumes, they can cause anxiety and that sometimes a, a student who has a, a lovely costume and another student might not have the wherewithal or the means to have that cost, a, a costume of such. Sometimes you have students who wear costumes that are, are sort of, um, cause problems throughout the day. Um, and it can, you know, at the younger levels, that can be a, a drain, I can understand that. Um, having been a middle school principal, we did happen to have dress up day when I was a principal, the school I was principal in, kids are a little older. Um, we, you know, it was a tough day sometimes and I did have some staff talking to me about the fact that that day was, was not as useful as some of the other days because of, of the Halloween costumes. So it's, it's not, um, not foreign to have this debate back and forth, but I just wanted to make it clear that there's no policy. And remember, the only one that sets policy is the school committee. There's no policy prohibiting costumes. There is policy that does, uh, indicate about dressing, uh, that you don't want something that is a distraction. Like if we did have costumes, we wouldn't want necessarily students wearing a mask or bringing in a simulated weapon or, or something to that degree because that could be a distracting factor. Um, but I don't think that, um, this particular situation fits, uh, a prohibitive, uh, situation based on that policy. So anyway, that's, that's all, I, I, I don't wanna.
No, I think that's fine, I think that's a great. Yeah, I, sorry. Move things along.
No, it's fine, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good explanation, I mean, if anybody, I don't see any comments there, so I think, thank you for dressing, I appreciate it.
So, Ms. Leskey, comments?
No, I, I appreciate you sort of talking through the thinking behind it and actually flexibility around, um, the, the dress code, because it really, at, at a certain point comes down to the dress code, where sometimes that's relaxed for a spirit day and sometimes it's not. Um, but there are just certain things that you want to wear and.
And, and I agree with the way we handle it as a district, uh, the policy just talks about distracting from the, uh, environment, the academic environment. And, um, you know, that doesn't prohibit a, a costume. We do have one question, if you'd like me to add, ask that or?
Um, yes, why don't we, why don't we recognize the, uh?
Okay. Um, the question is from, uh, Kristen, I'm sorry, Kristen Quinn, two nineteen Sawyer Street. And she states, thank you for your time and everything you do for our students. Speaking for a larger audience, we receive very specific emails from teachers that costumes are not allowed. We find it confusing to tell our children it's okay to dress up with things like fifties days, Diwali and a hundred days for a holiday, where ninety percent of our kids celebrate, they can't do it. We are proposing we do something where there is an hour within the day where costumes are allowed on Halloween in a parade situation. Uh, we took a look at the surrounding ti- times, I think she meant, I think she means towns, um, sorry, Miss, Miss Quinn. I repeat that. Towns, yes. Towns, yes. She just corrected. That's, that's the beauty of this. She corrected it live. Thank you. Where that is allowed. Yeah, I mean, I would speak to that. I just, I don't want to dictate that from my principals. And again, it's based on their academic day and the day that they're, that they're doing. I, I will say though, that, um, you know, thank you for acknowledging that there are other days when we do dress up. And so it's not a matter of dressing and not dressing. I will say we can be more communicative with our staff about what we're doing around Halloween and why we're doing it. Like there's some confusion out there. I think there is some thoughts from staff and I, I'll take this, that maybe it has been outlawed to dress up on Halloween. That, that actually isn't the case. So I do appreciate that and we'll clarify that. But, um, you know, in terms of a parade situation, I, I just, I wouldn't want to dictate that from my level.
And I, I, I support that. I guess I'll, I'll build on a little bit, you know, what I'm hearing from the community. I think our job is to pass on is that there is a, a, certainly a, a group of parents. Fairly numerous group of parents who would like to see some recognition and celebration of Halloween in the, especially in the, in the lower, lower grades. So I guess, um, given that it's not a school committee policy, and I don't think it's the realm of school committee to dictate what we celebrate and what we don't. By and large, certainly not to the level of whether we have a parade. Uh, I guess what I'm hearing is that those parents, their avenue would be to their building principal to say, hey, we would, we would appreciate some recognition of, of this holiday for our kids. And we think that creates, is that, is that fair? Is this a?
I, I think that's fair. I think also the PSO can have conversations about, you know, what they might add to that. But honestly, we do have a, a great activity. It's called trunk or treat that happens right after school, which I think is fabulous. So, yeah, I, I, again, I, I would stand firm to support any principal who didn't want to do a parade because of the disruption for that particular day.
And I, and I think that's fair. And I think that that's, so I, when I, when I'm, but I guess to, to put this to bed and move along. I think there's, uh, there's some discussions to be had. I guess parents and maybe building principles, some articulate, clearer articulation of what the rules are. Because it sounds like from Ms. Quinn's note that, um, that parents are getting potentially conflicting information about whether they can dress up or they can't.
I, I think that's probably true.
So that's a clarification. And then I think there might be some, maybe through the PSO or directly some, um, and maybe through our communication committee, some district outreach and discussion with parents about, you know, hey, look, this is, we're trying to, we're trying to teach kids here. This is a, a, this potentially is a non-education related disruptive activity or whatever the reason is. So I think that's, I think, I think that's helpful that we had this, had this conversation.
Yeah, and I think, I think you're right. I think the principals can have more open discussions with, um, parents about, about this and about their choices for this or any, any spirit day. I think it's important that people understand what we're doing.
We don't approve at this committee spirit days. So like, you know, we're not, we're not doing the hundred days. We're not, so.
But I just want spirit days. I'm not really picking which ones are spirit, you know.
And, and then the avenue for parents who do want a Halloween themed spirit day would be through the various buildings.
It would be, yeah.
So perfect. Any other comments for the committee on Halloween costumes? Because I feel that, I feel like if that's for next, then Halloween's passed. I'm kidding, but it's important to have this discussion, so.
We do, we do have a couple of additional comments from Ms. Quinn.
Okay. Oh, we, we, we do have our informal three comment rule that we had imposed a few years ago.
We won't count the correction of towns.
No, definitely not counting. But I, I welcome Mrs. Quinn's engagement on this.
Of course, I do as well. And Ms. Quinn says, thank you and correct. The parade allows for an hour of time out of the school day, so costumes won't be distracting all day. Trunk or treat is great, but it does make it hard for our MECO students to participate. It would be, we do have transportation available, but I, I agree with that.
Certainly.
It would be helpful to understand the policy. Again, the policy, there is no policy. The policy is just about dress in general and it's a, it's a school committee policy. You can see it right online.
Just a dress code.
It's right under students. And if you look down, um, under students, it says student dress code. It's just about distract, distracting dress. And that's all we want right now. Your freedom of speech and all of that. And then she also comments, uh, she says, thank you, thank you.
That counts for done. I'm kidding.
No, 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 that was the same one, one comment. And the next comment is, and yes, Dr. Sullivan, spirit days are great. And I would agree with that a hundred percent. I like Halloween too, for the record, but I, I'm just not, I don't want to micromanage that.
But so the big takeaway is for people who are interested in having a Halloween themed spirit day at the elementary school. It is not a policy that we don't have it. There's a policy that, that we can't dress up. That's a discussion to have.
We are inclusive. We will provide alternative activities for folks who, who don't want to participate if we do anything with that particular Halloween.
Yep. Great. All right. Any other questions, comments from the committee? We'll move on to teaching and learning. Academic District, Dr. Leslie Skones is not here at this, for this meeting for personal reasons, so which is totally fine. And so I don't know if Dr. Sullivan, you have anything to fill in for that. We had a great, what I recognize, we had a great meeting last, uh, school committee meeting on MCAS. And we're expecting some follow-up on that. So.
Yeah.
I feel like we can keep our, our eyes on teaching and learning.
I will say, um, it's been nice to see Mr. Roberts in action doing data dialogues with various groups around all sorts of data. So that, that's such a nice, a nice thing to have here where we're really sitting down with teachers, showing them data, talking about what, what we see and then really probing into what we can do to improve particular data points. So that's happening all throughout the district. I think he's sort of hitting his stride in that. This is about when I thought he would with that. So it's nice, uh, nice to see.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. That'll conclude the teaching and learning block. We'll move now on to budget resources of governance with our Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Susan Owen.
Lance, I have a. I thought we'd have a forum tonight. Well, not a Friday. And I have like, today's a fifteen dollar financial stuff has to be done. I have to pick my wife up and brain check.
How long do you have?
I got like. I'm already in trouble, so whatever we can do to, so I was just going to ask if we could table this because it's, there's so much information.
I do, I do want to table the capital list anyway, so I was going to propose that to the group. If we can table the capitalist, the reason being is that if, since we did have the town meeting approve the stabilization fund, um, I would like to think about how we can present, uh, how we incorporate that, assuming it passes at the ballot. So I would like to table that if it's okay. And then, uh, the monthly update, I think, is in the materials. What I could do is, Ms. Owen, maybe we do it abbreviated since we're about to lose our forum. Are there any, just very quickly, are there any major concerns that you have from a budget standpoint now, assuming that the, uh, we'll take the materials presented to the committee as read for purposes of.
Um, no, the only, you know, the only thing that I really wanted to address was like the last, last month, we addressed the shortfall in tuition's deficit of about five hundred and two thousand dollars. Now we're into the next month and that five hundred and two thousand deficit has dropped to four seventy-three. So that's why I said it's fluid. I mean, it could change day to day, depending on, you know, students coming in, students going out, students changing schools, students not attending school, student transportation, um, there's so many factors that go into the cost of these tuition. So it is, you know, it's, it's not down much, but it's down. Next month it could be up again. But we definitely need to have a conversation, you know, and stay on top of that throughout the year.
Any concerns from the, from the committee about the finance report?
I can ask a quick question afterwards.
So do we need any approvals based on our calendar?
No, because I think we voted the budget priorities and calendar last.
We did. I just want to make sure we stay to that.
Yeah, and we're just FYI too. We're going to be doing a walk through on Tuesday.
Tuesday, we have the capital walk through.
So that'll give us a little bit more, um, a little bit more information.
That's great. Just want to make sure that'll be the only function.
Other than that, um, you know, we're watching utilities, obviously custom utilities is up. Up every year, especially tuition. Other than that, we're right on target with thirty-three percent throughout the year and our budget's thirty-two point nine five. Throughout the year, so.
Great.
We're on target.
Excellent. So given we're about to lose our forum, what I would ask the committee is, is a motion to table the following two items. The capital presentation from Ms. Owen until next meeting. And the approval of minutes. And then for us to skip the food service, transportation. And then there are no topics that are reasonably anticipated, so I just did that one. Future agenda items, and then there's no executive session, so.
Yes, a minutes to.
Oh, we're going to table that.
Oh, table it. Okay.
So we'll table the capital and approval minutes. And basically, um, we will skip over the, the remaining minutes, the items. Do I have a motion to that effect? Motion, Mr. Cuny? Just last second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, we will table those two motions for the next meeting. And now all we need is a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved.
Second, all in favor? No opposed? The meeting of the Cohasset School Committee is hereby adjourned at seven twenty-three, just in time for Mr. Cuny to, uh, to make his next.
Yeah.
Thank you for your, uh, thank you for doing that. Thank you everyone for watching.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great night.